Thirty-four. First item is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held at April tenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda, I just handed you both, we received a letter of resignation from our tax collector, Lisa DeBian. She took a full-time job down in Groton, I think, I'm not a hundred percent sure where. But her resignation becomes effective April twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. I'm not actually a hundred percent sure how to accept the resignation prior to the effective date of the resignation. But I think for now, we can simply say that, you know, it's saddling with regret that we are going to accept the resignation either now or end the twenty-seventh. We'll have a, we'll probably have to meet a couple of times because statutes dictate that the Board of Selectmen appoint a replacement for the elected officials. And that appointment lasts until the end of her term, the elected term, or the next municipal election, whichever comes first, these happen to coincide, so appoint someone who will hold the position until November twenty. You know, Lisa wanted the position to be a full-time position, she felt strongly and argued that it should be. We just can't, I can't see, I don't see that. I think it's, it's a, it's open, the office when it's open is open enough, we've got assistants in there who are not fully busy, so I think we're, it's, you know, we'll, we have two folks have already expressed interest in the position, one is an assistant tax collector down on the shoreline. And another is a, an accountant, she's got an accounting business down in Essex, both of whom are, I think, both are qualified. I think that the woman who's working as a, as an assistant tax collector has already taken a couple of the classes. So she might be a little bit ahead. We're working to find someone to come into the office, to keep the office open for, during the weeks that we have to, to when Lisa's gone and we don't have someone appointed yet. Both of the people thus far are going to have to take some time to, to either leave their job or do what they need to do to
Are we gonna advertise it, or we just gonna?
We actually posted this resignation today.
Okay.
That it's effective on the twenty-seventh and that interested, you know, with the statute of how, how the role is filled and asking interested people and qualified people to contact my office. That, I don't want to keep this a long time, so I left, I said before three o'clock a week from today.
That's fine.
So we've got a week.
Excellent.
I've put feelers out, we have some people that may be able to help out, that, you know, neighboring tax collectors and things like that that may be able to fill in neighboring assistance. Tracy is, is doing some things now with credit card deposits and things like that. So the office hours may shift a little bit until we get back, get a full-time tax collector. But I think we'll, we'll be open, we'll be functioning, we won't just stop making revenue or collecting taxes. Yeah, we, I'm disappointed that this is where we are, but frankly, it wasn't a surprise. You know, I, she has stated for a long time that she, this position she feels should be a full-time. And I don't think it should, so, and, you know, that's where we are.
Unfortunate, because, you know, she does a good job collecting the taxes.
Yep.
We see that in our reports monthly. But if the position doesn't warrant full-time, it doesn't warrant full-time.
Right.
With the full-time comes more expenses.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, it's not just salary, it's, it works out to, you know, the, the health of package for, for her and her family, so. And whoever takes up that role, it takes, it turns into a benefit package as well. So. Unless there's anything else, you guys have anything to comment on that, I'll, I'll share with you the folks that we have as they come in and their resumes and things like that, and we'll have a couple of special meetings. We could, I mean, i- if someone could, if someone qualified came in and said they were ready to start, we could probably have a special meeting on Monday and appoint them on Monday. But I want to give folks an opportunity, and so as we do that, we'll, this will be kind of a ongoing thing. So if that's it, then we'll move on from there. We have the replacement of the compactor at the transfer station is next. That, we are scheduling that to take place, right now, it looks like the week of May seventh. Right, it looks as if it's going to be, we're hopeful that it's less than, less than ten days, but it looks to me to be about five to seven days of work to get it done. And I think that's conservative, I, we're hopeful that we can do it in five days. We are trying to find another, like a garbage truck that we could rent, so the folks that bring their household waste, they can throw it into that and we can just drive that down the street to Essex and dump it. I'm not particularly comfortable with the, just the box that we have a backhoe there to crush it and keep it down. I don't think that's a good, safe way to do that at all. So we're trying to find alternatives. One of the alternatives is actually closing the, the household waste section of the dump during, during the construction. The deconstruction and construction, and I'm working to try to find another alternative than that, because folks need to tell. But we'll see where that, we'll see where that comes to, if you guys have any ideas or thoughts, let me know. But that, right now, as of right now, we're thinking of schedule, we're look, working to schedule that for May seventh. Should be, we close the dump on, or not close the dump, but it will affect Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And hopefully, we're done by Tuesday of the next week, and then back in, back in gear.
And that'll work straight through the weekend?
If needed, that's, that's what we're kind of looking at, whether we're going to do that now.
I guess there's no other facility similar to that that we might be able to gain temporary access to?
Uh, we might reach out to Essex and see what that would cost, that's certainly the closest, but we need to see what the cost is.
Yeah, exactly.
Getting a garbage truck would be the best solution, finding one and someone would rent it.
Yep, yeah, the cost, we have a couple of calls in already, we'll see what we can come up with. Scott?
We have enough time to word out and ask people who can, who can hang onto their garbage for a week not to bring it?
Yes, absolutely. That is, that is, I laugh at that, but that is, that is an important thing to do. I mean, it's, a garbage truck is not as big as the compactor that we have, so it will mean a couple of rides to Essex to make, to clean it up, I think. And that's not impossible task, but it is, it is something we have to plan for and to let people know that it's going to be a different situation, and if they can hold on to their garbage for a week, please do.
Deeply appreciated.
Yeah.
We'll bring it all to Twain's, he's got a lot of room.
No problem.
Oh, okay. So any thoughts, anything?
No.
Questions about that? Okay. Capital Improvement Plan review, I'm sorry, that, I hoped to have that for you guys today, it's, it's very close, but I didn't want to bring it up and have it on.
No problem.
So we'll table that.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, I don't know if we, we need a motion to table something?
Probably be on the safe side, yeah, make a motion, we table that for discussion next time. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
And something that I didn't put on the agenda, but just for conversation's sake, because I just thought, just recognized it, is two weeks ago, we talked, we discussed and voted to pay the attorney's fees ninety-five hundred dollars.
Yep.
We voted to do that in next year's budget.
Yep.
I was discussing that with the Board of Finance during some of the workshops, and they have decided and they're, and they're, I'm gonna ask them, at their official meeting today, they would prefer to pay it out of this year's budget. Which is fine with me, I, I don't, I, I kind of liked the idea of next year's budget because then it's budgeted for. But they're, they think there's money in the budget that we can appropriate.
If there's money in the budget, we can pay the gentleman.
I mean, there is money there, it's just it wasn't budgeted for, so at the end of the year, we, you know.
As long as the money is there, they don't have any hard feelings.
It, it seems to be, you know, we'll see, we'll see at the end of the year when we're reconciling all numbers. And it is, it is a tight year, but that was their preference, and I'm, I'm not inclined to argue with them.
No, I'm, I'm good with it if there's money there, because like I said, the gentleman's been waiting.
He's been waiting.
A long time.
Yep.
Yeah, good point, Tony.
So that's just news from there, anybody have any, audience of citizens, any questions or thoughts?
One point of consideration, I've noticed at the corner of Village Street and Main Street, that we may be developing what is, I guess you would call a parking safety issue. People will come, they'll park right square on the corner of the, the intersection, which makes it hard for people coming down Main to make a left on Village to safely make the turn. Whether or not we can do anything about it, I don't know, but I've had trouble myself on occasion, so I just wanted to report that to you.
Yeah.
It's not something that I think is going to go away, and it may be a bit difficult to regulate until people are adequately informed of any change. But it's, sometimes if you take a look and you're up that way, just look how sometimes people will park, particularly given the proximity of my favorite Chinese joint and ice cream joint and Red House and all that, so. It's, it's not a safe situation at times. One hundred percent of the time, no, it's, it's not a problem all the time, but there are occasions when it is. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Just to make sure I understand, is parking on Main Street, two plus the intersection, parking on Village Street?
If you come down Main Street and hang a left on Village, you're talking about the right-hand side of Village.
Yeah, right under the tree.
By the Big Beach Drive, yeah.
Okay, yep, okay.
It's kind of, kind of dicey trying to make that turn.
Yeah, I've noticed that, but only like on election days and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's, it's even more frequent than that, I've noticed.
I'm sure it is, yeah.
So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Thanks, we'll take a look at it. Audience of citizens, any questions? Go ahead.
I might ask how the budget process is going.
Well, I think the budget is done, we'll, we'll discuss it tonight, and the Board of Finance will move it forward. Tonight, I think, and we'll go to our town meeting, or our public hearing is scheduled for May first.
Seven thirty.
At seven thirty upstairs. And our vote right now is scheduled for a town meeting on May twenty-first, on Monday. The other thing to keep in mind for that, just a little bit of an aside, is the, the, the Region Four budget referendum is scheduled for May second. To Wednesday of next, next week. When I say of next week?
Oh, it's Tuesday.
Tues- Tuesday. No, it is not, no, it is not, it is May second. It is scheduled for May second. You weren't here Friday, I remember that, because we were going through some scheduling things and discovered that, because we had always thought it was, and Lori has been post, publishing it as May first. And we looked at it carefully, because I looked at the Region Four's publication, and that was for May second, which is the following Tuesday, or Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday, May second is a Wednesday. That is the referendum from noon to eight. So it kind of threw us off, because it has always been on the same day as our, as our meeting, but calendar this year just put them his day apart. And it faked me out, because I actually put in the newsletter, May first, based on information that we'd gotten from the Board of Finance. But in the article sent to the newspaper, it's, we're all set for May second, so. And on the postcard, that's going to go out, hopefully tomorrow, or it'll be Thursday or Friday, it'll be on May, it'll be scheduled properly. But yeah, so back, to bring it back to the budget, yes, we, the budget is set, well, not set yet, but I think that all the workshops were fin, is finalized, we'll go over it tonight and make any changes that, that Board of Finance wants to make, because I'm comfortable with the budget as, as it's put forward. It's a tight budget again, and we'll talk, you'll hear more about this when the Board of Finance gets here, but, you know, last year, we budgeted without a state budget. We prepared our budget without the state budget, and we came in at, at our, at our number. When the state prepared their budget in October and approved their budget in October, we, we were looking to be the recipient of an additional four hundred thousand dollars, so that was great. But over the course of the year, that number has whittled down and whittled down and whittled down to what the state promised and what the state actually delivered. And it looks right now as if we're gonna end up with about a thirty thousand dollar surplus, something, something like that, we'll have that number tonight. So we are in this very similar situation, again, we don't, we don't have a state budget there. So we're budgeting on what they promised us. And I, while we're budgeting on what they promised us, I think we should be fully aware that we may not receive everything that's been promised us, so. At least if our eyes, we know about it now, going in, that's where we are. So, but we'll be, I'm sure there'll be a good, long conversation, we've been working pretty hard with the Board of Finance to try to get it finalized. Okay? Anyone else? Gina, I saw your hand go up, no? Okay. All right. Paving will begin at the southern end of River Road between the Essex Town Line and Buckingham, that will begin I believe, if not, the end of next week, the following week. They're also gonna do a little bit of work at the, at the cemetery and the and that's not, the town is not doing that, but they will be up at the cemetery paving a section up there, and they'll also be over at Kirkland Commons repaving their apartment. It's not, you know, those are both paid for by the cemetery and by the Kirkland Commons, but just to let everybody know that that's, they're going to be there.
And who's doing that, Dibble?
Dibble has got that, yeah, yeah, we had Dibble, we had proposals from Dibble, from Tilcon, and from Nick Olson, Winthrop Construction. And that's it from me. So I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, this is the Deep River Board of Finance, April meeting. First item on our agenda would be minutes from our, what's the date? March, March meeting. Does anyone wish to recommend we accept the minutes?
I will recognize we accept the minutes.
I'll, I'll second it.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Discussion?
Oh, I agree. Would you like to have a discussion?
No.
Sometimes I offer discussions, you bemoan me.
I just want to give everybody a chance.
We're trying to discuss, okay, good. Hearing no desire to discuss the minutes, could I have a vote of accepting the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. The next item would be citizens. We, does anyone wish to speak as a citizen? Absent a citizen, we will move on to the next agenda, if I remember, is that, select? Oh, Tommy, Tommy, Tommy.
Hopefully, I haven't received the town deposit for, for, for April. Third time's a charm, so we're having the town firefighters' pension meeting. This, this Thursday, April twenty-sixth at four-thirty, so just kind of a reminder. I know this is for Angus, for Bud, for Pete Lewis, who represents the town employees, for Scott Oden, who represents the fire department, and myself. So certainly, if anyone else wants to, wants to come, it's, the meeting's open, again, it's Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at four-thirty. Couple of things, the education enhancement monies that we received, we should be getting, generally, it comes in on April thirtieth, and that would be seven hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. We did receive the ECS monies in January, that was three sixty-two, eight ninety-seven, so the largest portion is actually due on April thirtieth, so hopefully, that will be coming our way. If you look at the town deposits, if you look at from last month on the bottom, on, on March twenty-sixth, so we had five million, three fifty-one, nine seventy-two. This month, we're at four million, three oh six, four ninety-one, so in the last month, there was a million, forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars that and accounts payables that left us. So we still have, if you look at this general fund totals at the top, we do have three million, sixty-four thousand still in our Farmington account. That is getting point seven five percent or return, which is, they actually have increased that for about twenty-five basis points, it was point five oh, so now it's point seven five. And especially on that, so that kind of money, that's a nice, a nice increase. If you go down to the memorial fund accounts, I know I've been in, in touch with Russ and Kathy. They finally, we phased out the Liberty Bank checking account, and we closed that, officially closed that, they had zeroed it out, I called and made sure they would close that out, which they did yesterday. So that, that is another account that we don't have to pay anything on.
That's the old memorial account?
Yes.
Which we had not added money into ever, and spent down, you know, by plan.
Yes, and I, I remember, I remember that, right, we were trying to phase that one out, right, exactly.
Just want to tell folks, and the, this is for the food pantry and the, and the social services use, and we still have another account that has a good deal of money in it, that, you know, very solvent, and, and that, that account, we do add money to, that account we spend from now, and we're good, we're in good shape.
That's the one that we made donations to?
That's the Deep River Community Fund, that still exists, and we plan on having it exist for years to come.
That is not this account on here, correct? You do, that account is not listed as part of the town account?
That account is right here, that's the community fund.
Oh, that's the eighty-nine, seven?
Eighty-nine, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
And that's fundraising, that's donations, that's not taxpayer money in any way.
Correct, that is not taxpayer money.
It's not our money in any way, it's just
That's generous donations from the people of Deep River, the businesses of Deep River.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Where does the thing memorial fund come from? I should have asked this about a hundred years ago.
Where did that end?
I mean, community fund sounds more, more appropriate.
That, you know, I can't answer that, that preceded me, and, and if anyone else does, you're welcome to, to chime in, but that, that fund was existing before the Community Health Committee started.
Oh, really?
And we, we had it to start with.
If it was a commemoration of somebody, you know, wouldn't
It's just an awkward name, community fund, I've been used to playing Monopoly enough that I recognize its intended purpose. All right. So Tom, three point, how much, the three accounts you have at the top? The Farmington is our main dispersing account, or is that just where you sit money to get earned interest?
Well, it is, but that's, that's the account that we wire monies to the general fund, and, and when we get, receive tax revenues, the, the monies go into, into that account.
And that's because you get a better interest rate, correct?
Yes, yeah, the Liberty Bank account is pretty much just a holding account that we've had, I didn't really want to close it out, but but we certainly, I certainly could do that.
So what is our dispersing account, citizens or Liberty?
Citizens is our general fund account.
Got it.
That's our operating account.
All right, okay, good. And the three oh nine, is that further down, is that where we have placed our capital funds?
Yes.
Two, three hundred and nine thousand dollars is in cap, okay, and is at Farmington as well, and that is getting point seven five.
It's getting the same, same interest rate, yes.
All good. Anyone have any questions for Tom?
Next. Thank you, Tom.
Just a quick thing. The ECS money that we're getting, and this is pretty incidental, but the ECS money that we're hoping to earn on Monday of next week will be short of the promised money, because they've, as we've discussed in some of the workshops, they've taken the money that was going into the rent through rebate from that, so it, it, I think it's twenty thousand dollars, which is not a whole lot when you're talking about the seven hundred and fifty, but it is something that is not going to be the full amount.
In addition to that, you received a memo which you shared with me from, is it CCM, that the governor is going to reduce that number down a bit as well, all right?
Yep.
That's about fourteen.
That was another fourteen or, fourteen or eighteen, I don't remember a ten. But that's up in the air, that's just one of the balls that, you know, the governor's budget reduces it, the Republicans' budget, I think, increases it. Democrats are, I think, in the same place, but it's just part of the unknowns, the big giant question mark that comes from the state budget. That would be for next year's budget, not for
That's what I was just wondering, as soon as I asked it, I don't think that's this year, that's next year, is it? Because they always put nine, ten, ten. Are we at recommendations of selectmen?
Yes.
Angus, do you have any recommendations?
Uh, two things that, one's a recommendation, I guess one is just a, a request for an authorization. Last month, we were, we received, so you received some correspondence from the tax collector with a list of tax bills requesting be added to the suspense list, not sure how many of you kept that list or what it was, but there was some questions about the changes in it, something that went from, you know, very small numbers up to larger numbers, and we weren't sure as to what the reasoning was for that. That really was just a result of the last time that, that properties were added to that list was where the low numbers ended, the high numbers. There, there's a continuous effort to continue to collect the numbers, the money, it is just a suspense list, so it doesn't cost us money to do that kind of, Lisa explained it as, it is a necessary thing. She explained it to me that the change that we saw, the, the quest, the main reason for our question was it went from three hundred, four hundred dollars on properties up to ten thousand, twelve thousand. And what the reason for was, for that was because that change in that year was the last time that properties were added to the suspense list. It doesn't mean that she's no longer trying to get those monies, so continue to put effort into getting those monies indefinitely. So I would recommend that you move forward back to Lori's motion, and that we approve the list of tax bills to be added to the suspense list totaling about seventy thousand dollars.
Now, Lori, rephrase that, so Lori, remember how Lori phrased it? Do we just take, do we have to say a dollar amount and move it to suspense, or can we just say those accounts listed on the email?
Lori's motion totaled seventy thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Bingo. To approve the tax, the list of tax bills to be added to the suspense list totaling, and then just some discussion, so that's all. So I'll just copy the motion and paste it in.
All right, so we have a first, do we have a second?
Second, thank you.
All those who would like to discuss the suspense list. Hearing none.
I do.
You do?
I do, I do. If you put it on a suspense list, but you're still trying to collect it, I, I, I just, I can't get past that one.
It goes from the, the list, in, in the tax collector's lists of monies that are in our rears. That goes into our budget. The suspense list does not. So when we're budgeting for taxes in arrears that we are hoping to collect from, it, it... I wish I had a tax collector here to explain it to you, because it was two weeks or three weeks ago that she explained it to me.
Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot either.
No, it's, I, I, it's just, it's, it's, it was a simple enough explanation to me that it just takes it from arrears, which is in our budget, out of our budgeting numbers. So we can't, we can't expect it for revenues because it's, it's that far back.
That's, that's a good thing to know, okay.
That is consistent with the way it's been explained to me for twenty years, that there are accounts that we assume can be collected, there are some that we do not have as much faith in. We, we deal with, we deal with the potential collection, and it's been relatively suggested, but this moves it out of that high probability into a much, much lower problem.
And it should be...
Most of it is, is it property? Most of it's property?
It's almost all property, yeah.
Which we will someday get when the property is sold, that's what, or it's been explained to me.
Okay.
So we've got a first, we've got a second, we've had a discussion. Can I have a, should we take a vote? All those in favor of, of putting the seventy-thousand-six-hundred on the suspense list, please say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, second is, um, you may remember during workshops, we discussed, and I, I don't think we talked about it a month ago, I think it was just two weeks old. Um, we discussed a complaint from a Watts Law office that the town of Deep River has owed him money from two thousand and ten. I was able to negotiate sixteen-thousand dollars down to ninety-five-hundred dollars. And he agreed that he would not expect that payment until July, so we could put it in next year's budget. Um, in our discussions, it was clear to me that you all thought we should pay it this year. In order to do that, I'm going to need authorization from you. I'm not sure to overspend my legal fees line, and at the end of the year, we will, uh, we will make adjustments to, to get that corrected. But I don't have ninety-five-hundred dollars in my legal line, and I still have other legal fees that I need to pay, so... Do you have anything extra in your legal fee, or you expect to expend it all?
I expect to just, we spend.
We have about seven-thousand, a little bit more than seven-thousand left, and you expect to expend that, so, um, so, uh, the option is we could, well, the option is, is everyone in favor of doing that? You seem to have chatted up, so it's a yes, but we could allocate money now up to that line. I prefer not, I would recommend that you consider not doing that, because we're only allowed to change dollar amounts once before it goes to town meeting. So if we authorize the over expenditures when we know total, we can then do it in one, one, what is the phrase, one swell?
One fell swoop.
I'm missing some continent in there.
We discussed this at the board of selectmen's, uh, meeting two weeks ago, and agreed that putting it into next year's budget was, was our, our thinking. But we discussed it again tonight, and if, if, if you all are comfortable with doing that, then that's, that's agreeable to us.
I'd like, it's a small amount. At this point, we have a little bit of a surplus, not surplus, but we have funds that are available to use. I'd rather get it out, I would rather not have an extra ten-thousand dollars added to next year's expenditures. It's ten-thousand we don't have, so we put on the taxpayer, so let's not.
That's kind of the way we felt at turn of work.
Yeah, that's, that's just what you expressed, and it's fine, it's fine with us.
Do we need a resolution to support Lori's feelings?
I will make the motion to make, to authorize the payment of nine-thousand-five-hundred, applying that payment from selectmen's line five-two-oh-one-oh, which is the legal fees.
I second it. Anyone wish to discuss it further? Hearing none, a call vote, those who have authorized the over expenditure of nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars to pay, is it Mr. Locke, Attorney Locke?
Attorney Watt.
Attorney Watt.
And if you remember, this was a, a bill that was sent to the town in two thousand and ten. I just saw it in February of this year, so I think we should get rid of it.
Well, in an attempt to be witty, by the longer we wait, the longer we've got the bill down, so... Letting vote on paying it as, as recommended. All those in favor of, of paying it within this year in that line, I'd say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any additional, uh, information, or should we move to the budget?
No, I think we should move right to the budget.
And we have lots of budgets. Should we talk about...
No correspondence.
No correspondence, sorry, okay. Should we, Lori, do you have questions?
On this month's budget first.
On this month's budget, why don't we do that first?
Um, four things. Page one, the sprinkler elevator inspection fee went from a plus, one-thousand-two-hundred, to a minus two-thousand. Page one.
Yeah, I see it. That is something that I will check. It could have been, there has been some problems with the elevator. Should not have come out of that, though, that is, that is a, that's a contractor...
Yeah, because that's a contract.
Those, those fees are agreed upon, so that shouldn't have gone over. So I will check on that.
The second is page two, the auditorium fee. Are we still pulling from that? Why are we pulling from that? From page two, auditorium, um, it went from six, uh, one-thousand-six-hundred to now one-thousand-seven-hundred.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing auditorium.
So just pulling from that line still? I thought we were...
No, we should not be. Thank you.
On page three, police vehicle.
Oh, that's good, what was it last month?
From one-thousand-six-hundred.
Negative, correct?
Negative.
So there's incremental a hundred some dollars?
Um, yeah, a hundred some.
Yeah, I'll find out what that one is.
So when people use the auditorium upstairs?
Yep.
Sometimes they pass a fee, sometimes they do not, correct?
Correct, there are, you know, local nonprofits, the grocery, or organizations like that do not, we don't charge them for that. We charge them for cleanup fee, but that's, that's not for the use of the auditorium. Oftentimes, we don't charge them for police, you know, the guys just swing by when they're on, on their rounds.
So, correct, so if we charge them for a cleanup fee, it'd be more, for the margin, like in the hundred-dollar range, do we have incremental cleaning costs that would be charged here? Who does the...
Yes, we do.
Who does the, who does the cleaning upstairs?
The town, the town's cleaning organization, Dorothy.
Oh, she would be paid extra to do that?
She, she does that on a regular basis, and, uh, after events, she does that again.
So following Lori's question, we could see, with a little bit of energy, if the, there was a revenue offsetting, it should be off, it's, the auditorium should be an offsetting number.
It absolutely should be, that's why I was setting up in revenues and...
But you've offered a qualification, even though we don't charge some nonprofits.
There is an expense.
Well, we would still charge them a hundred-dollar cleaning fee, and it would...
Our expenses are generally paid for.
That was my statement, it'd be an offsetting account, but the question is, do we still do that?
So we will look at it in revenues and see what that, wherever that might be, because that was in there.
I lost my connection, so I can talk further.
Yeah, see, if you look at auditorium, there are current year revenues of nineteen-hundred-and-twelve dollars. So, um, I think it are things like the year's plan, that, you know, there are charges and there are costs.
Okay.
Page what?
Page three, police vehicle. Do we have a problem with the police vehicle that cost an additional six dollars?
Yep. And we have got another car that's in, uh, Pete hit a deer, so that's in...
He's okay?
Being repaired. Yeah, well, the deer is not.
Yeah, no, they, that's...
Pete is okay, good.
That would be an insurable then, right?
Yeah, we'll see what the deductibles found out, so it's going to be a cost after that.
And then the last one was the storm contingency went from eighteen...
Where is storm contingency?
H-four.
Yep.
Storm contingency.
Yep.
From eighteen-one-hundred to twenty-five-four.
Yeah, we've been cleaning up brush.
So that's still just all brush cleaning?
Yes, that's all it is, and I think you will see another charge for that as well, because we're still cleaning up.
I just had those four.
Okay.
That does set an interesting question as we move into the budget.
So is part of that going to be refunded by FEMA?
Only if the state declares an emergency, and I've been told that they are not going to do that. The whole state was not impacted like Deep River, Chesapeake, Essex, where this area was, was really the, I don't know what you'd call it, the focus of this storm was, was on this, this part of the Connecticut River Valley. The rest of the state wasn't anywhere near that. And as a result, the state's not going to declare an emergency, very similar to the ice dam, was, the damage was focused up and had, um, and the state didn't declare that emergency, so... We have to, and we did, uh, but it's still, we won't get any monies unless the state does, and it, it looks bad that they're, they're not going to.
All right, it's time to turn to the draft, proposed budget for fiscal year eighteen and nineteen. That we will take to town hearing on Monday or Tuesday the first?
Tuesday.
While we left our last workshop nodding that we had reached a pretty good agreement, if not an absolute, on expenditures, I have encouraged Angus to increase the contingency, the employee contingency from ten to fifteen. That would be the only change from last workshop in the budget. And, uh, anyone who wants to can chat about that. My rationale for encouraging it is it just gave us a little bit more flexibility, we're still in negotiations. It would give us some flexibility. It is my hope that once those dollars are, once there's an agreement reached with the union, we will take that contingency and allocate it to each employee and zero that line out, um, so it would go somewhere.
That's correct, and it's my hope that we don't use it.
So the, the question which we are working towards, if we have a, if we have a tentative mill rate increase that we wish to take to the town as being indicative when they come to the public hearing, if you didn't put the fifteen, it would just drop to, if you don't change that number, it would merely drop to the surplus, you'd end up in the same spot, so I do not think there's any change in anything we want to do. Now, so I guess we should pause here and say, one of you needs to recommend that we take to the town a proposed budget, sixteen-million-nine-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-three-hundred-fifty-five dollars.
Of expenditures only.
Of expenditures only, all right. Now, I'd like to sort of hang that there and continue on my forum. Angus and I spent time today with Kathy, attempting to get a better estimate of how we will end June, this fiscal year. What, and it took me the longest while to get here, so, um, and I may have pushed you all in the right direction, that you will be surprised. I believe we are going to get eighty-six, approximately eighty-six-thousand dollars from state revenues than what we budgeted.
For this year's fiscal year.
And I have placed it on this forum because I think it becomes important to tell the town. Now, we'll just go back and say what I just said again. We put together a budget, which we call appropriated budget, based on information we received from OPM in February. We passed our budget in June, state passed their budget in July or August, later than us. As a result, they changed the dollar amount of, of education funds that they're going to give to the town of Deep River. However, since that time, they have also indicated to us we're not going to get some dollars. So Angus and I, based on the best information we have, suggested the budget, to be consistent with the budget, we should be adding eighty-six-thousand dollars to it. No one should take comfort that we're going to get these numbers.
We get the dollars. We're going to get the numbers, we're not going to get, we may not get the dollar.
So in case I haven't confused you enough, here's what we budgeted. We didn't budget enough, we're going to adjust the number we'll take to the town as a comparison against fiscal budget, but we don't believe we're going to get the dollars, so it's an awkward conversation.
Yes, it is. And part of that conversation, but you, you set it up perfectly, would be the, the reality that we determined and moved our budget in May of last year. We approved our budget. That budget was based on whatever numbers that we had from the state at the time. And I think it was July, the state approved their budget, an unbalanced budget, and have been maneuvering with those numbers ever since then. That approved budget actually increased revenues to Deep River by about four-hundred-thousand dollars. Over the time of, from July until now, that four-hundred-thousand dollars has whittled down to approximately eighty-six-thousand. And there are still monies out there that they are holding back, so we don't know where we're going to land. This is our best, best guess. And I think, take, and I'd like to just repeat what I said at the board of selectmen's meeting right now, that, I believe that we did a good job putting that budget together, because this is where we landed, and are pretty darn close to even Steven, and we're hoping still above. This budget that we're preparing now is, we're doing the same thing, we're taking money, we're taking a guess at what we're going to get from the state, because they have not told us what they're going to give to us. We're using our best guess information to, and numbers that they have given us. I think that we have a really tight budget. Our expenditures are, are less than what I would like them to be, but with this, with the revenues, what they are, it's, it's a good budget. But we need to go into that budget with our, both eyes open to the fact that we may not get the monies that the state is promising us.
With the additional revenues of eighty-six, which you're seeing for the first time, that turns our conversation of last week, where we were anticipating ending this fiscal year at about fifty-thousand dollars deficit, it turns into a positive number of forty, thirty-nine five, forty-thousand dollars. You add that to the existing assumed surplus, and we will enter the budget year with about nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars of surplus. We then have the conversation, well, we, we have the same conversation we had last week. We should, I suggested we have an obligation to tell the town what we think we would be increasing the mill rate, and that's why I've kept it at point-seven-five. The, I wish to reintroduce that there is enough risk in what's happening next year, that we should not come off seventy-five, but that is a conversation for people to follow up on. It was a discussion last week whether that number should be low. We have more money, so should we renew that conversation or keep the seventy-five to going into public meetings, is the question. It's not, I mean, certainly when we get to the final decision, and hopefully... and hopefully we'll have more money from the state and we'll know whether monies are coming or not coming. But it is, so I think hopefully everyone followed what I was saying. And do we want to change the seventy-five as an indicator?
I do not want to change the seventy-five because I have no faith in the state. They're, they're, they're taking away veterans' funds, they're taking away elderly funds, they're taking away renters' funds. Well, we'll give you this money, but we're gonna take it out of ECS. No, we'll give it to you in ECS. We'll take it away from here. I don't trust the state right now, and I think we need to protect ourselves and collect it upfront as opposed to having to do a potential supplemental tax later, of which we know is going to cost additional money in tax, in voting, town meetings, and everything there, as well as preparation of the supplemental taxes out of six thousand, whatever that cost is to present, to prepare supplemental, and then try to collect some, collect that funding from everybody. I, I'm not in favor of that. You know, if we collect extra and they do, do, come through with the amount that they actually want, maybe we don't have to raise the mill rate next year.
To give you comfort, the thirty-nine assumes that we will get the remaining town road aid and the hundred and four, for additional road aid. No, that's not true. It does assume town road aid will come through.
Yeah.
Anyone have any addition things to add? Tonight, we have to agree on expenditures. They do not seem to be in play. I would like at least a nod of what to tell the citizens of the town we believe is the mill increase. While everyone is very interested in budgets, I picture many of them are there to get listen to the mill rate.
Have they shouldn't?
Yes, they should.
You know, if you're looking for roundabout thoughts, we've all sat through budget workshops for a couple of months. We've, we've looked at everything with a, a magnifying glass. And I'll say it again, as I said it the other day, point seven five, it's a lot, I know. It's also a prudent number to add to the, to the mill rate because it seems to protect us pretty well in a time when we're not sure what we might get from the state. There was a time when we always knew what we were gonna get because we had a budget from the state and that, those days are, they're gone. And so we have to do the prudent thing to protect our citizens in Deep River. So I think that's a good number also.
My concern, if we go point seven five this year and it blows through, then next year, gee, we'll go another point seven five because we gotta add to our surplus. And I just don't want to get in this, you know, I mean, let's, we're trying to keep taxes down. Just people that point seven five is the problem. Point five is gonna be a problem to them.
Yep.
Point seventy-five is gonna be more of a problem. And I just feel very uncomfortable with it. If it isn't, I can understand it, come, budget time, the budget, the states, the money's not there from the state. We don't have any surplus. We have to do something. I have no problem with the, with the expenditures. I think you've done a great job of this. My problem is that we're, if we turn around and put point seven five, and the state knows we put point seven five, and the state knows that we have the money, we don't expect the money, the state's very easy on a sit back and say, well, we're not gonna give it then. They don't expect us, so we're not gonna give it.
I agree. I mean, I think the point, if you go point five, if, when I look at the budget, I have no problem with the expenditures. I think everybody did a phenomenal job and kept things well under control and well constrained. But if we're bumping up our surplus by about a half a mil, two hundred thirty-five thousand, which is what this budget, which is what this does.
Yep.
It increases our surplus by half a mil, right? If, if you're in Hartford, and to Lori's point, if you don't trust the state at this point in time and you're not sure, if you're being prudent by raising taxes on the people of Deep River that have more money in your surplus, and they look at it and they say, oh, that's money that you can spend. So they take it away. So I don't necessarily know that it accrues to benefit of the people of Deep River in this current environment. If we increase taxes to bump the surplus, to have it be looked at as a pot of cash that will be then expected to expend for money that they'll withhold. So that's my concern. So I, so from my point of view, in, in doing a supplemental, point seven five or point five, you're not gonna put a supplemental tax bill out for a quarter of a mil. I'm sorry, it's, it's just not gonna happen. Politically, it's not gonna happen expenditure wise to do notice and everything else. It makes no fiscal sense, right? So I think your actually would be perhaps more prudent to go with the lower one in this regard.
Yeah. I don't agree with, with you.
Yeah.
On that point at all.
That's fine.
But I wanted to try to go back to Bill's while it's still fresh in my mind. And it's not anymore because now I'm thinking about what you just said. But I think what, what Bill, Bill, your, your concern is that we're taxing to build the, the general fund or the, the reserve. And that's not at all the case. And that's something that Bud and I argue about, not argue, but discuss every week when we get together. We do not want to tax, we, we need to build our reserve fund. There's no question about that. We are at a point where if we went to get bonded, we would be laughed out of their office.
I'm just looking at the number here.
But we are.
Nine twenty going up to a million one fifty-five.
I know, I know. And that, that million, ten million one five is still fifty percent of where we should be to be bonded. And if we continue to have, to neglect our reserve fund, we will, we will have to continue to neglect our capital fund, and we will not have monies to buy things that we need to buy. A big part of this budget is based on the fact that we have been hammered by the schools for, for years. And as a result, we have had to neglect the town's infrastructure.
Right.
This budget does not do half, doesn't do a quarter of what I think we need to do with the town's infrastructure. It does some. And it leaves us a cushion for expected shortfall from the state. And that's my answer to, to Bill. This is not put together, certainly not lately. I do not, I, I had come into this budget hoping to be a quarter at the, at best because I anticipated the schools were gonna drop more than Region Four did. Our, our elementary school did a great job trimming that budget. Our Region Four did not do what I had hoped. So we did not have the cash to be able to do what I wanted to do. As far as whether or not the state looks at our, looks at our budget individually and determines what to give us, I think that that is, I don't think that that's, I don't think that's right. They may in fact look at our reserve fund and see what to do. And they will look at our reserve fund and say that we are, we are not even fifty percent of where we should be. And, and that is indicated in last year's promise of more money to ECS. But also the disappointment of pulling monies out from other places.
Right.
You know, so.
Overall, they cut us.
Yeah.
I mean, overall, they cut, you know, they cut, they cut us.
Overall, they cut us, that's right.
So.
And I anticipate, I anticipate more of that. Now, point seven five, as I said, is half a mil higher than I came into this budget hoping to get. But I, I do think that it is the right number. I, I understand you're starting, and we'll, we'll have this conversation.
We can have this, right. It's, yeah, it's just that, you know.
We've had it.
You can respectfully disagree. I mean, you know, that's fine, that's fine. It's good to have differing opinions.
Absolutely. That's why I like, that's why I like this group of people. Because we have good conversations.
Yeah, I just feel that, you know, it, we may put the burden on our taxpayers but not reap the benefit of it in the sense that, one way or the other, okay? If we were budgeting in a different environment where we knew what the revenues were, that we were gonna receive from the state, we would not, it would be a non-issue.
It'd be a whole different ballgame.
Admittedly, it'd be a different ballgame. It's just in this current environment, and not to be cynical, and not to be negative, but, you know, they may look at it that if we raise the rate and there's more money available one way or the other in our budget, we may get cut somewhere along the line, that or not. That's my concern. It happened, it happened last year.
We both have the same end that we're going to be cut.
Right.
And we have a different solution to how to, to how to respond to that.
Well, I, I'm just saying, an increased, it may invite it.
Yeah.
Is my concern.
Understood. I, I don't think the increase does that, but I don't know, so I can't, you know.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
No, all right. And to your point, I understand. They may look at it and say, oh, you don't have enough in reserves, so we'll leave you guys alone. But last year, for whatever reason, they, you know, the, the small towns in this area, okay? Deep River, Essex, Chester. The net result economically to these towns is there's a big outflow of cash that goes out of these towns and goes up to Hartford and doesn't come back.
Yep. Well, it comes back, it comes back to Deep River. Essex has an entirely different situation.
Yeah.
Entirely different. Moody's has got them triple A or whatever the best rating is. They, they're, people are asking them to borrow money. They don't get that much money from the state. Chester gets about half of what we get.
Alright.
And we get the most in this little tri-town.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying.
But small towns around the state are getting creamed.
Right. The net result is less money comes back than goes out.
Oh, yeah.
John, Bill, it's not lost money, I'm sure, but I shall ask. I am merely asking for, to put seven five on a postcard and put it in front of the town in public hearing as an indication, a good indication, serious indication, that the Board of Finance intends to do. It is not the actual vote.
That's right.
And that's not lost money, I'm sure.
No, we vote on that immediately following the town meeting.
Yep, in the twenty-sixth or something.
Which actually, I think we've had this discussion in the workshops. We're putting forth the worst-case scenario. If we find that we get monies, or that we, that the state comes up with a budget between now and the twenty-first, then we, we're in a different mindset. The expenditures are not going to change. Our expenditures, right now, I think, are as, as trim as they can be.
I don't think anybody disputes that. There's been a wonderful job done on the expenditure side.
Alright, so I've got two and two. Carmella, once again, you.
I'm still for.
You still got seven five?
Point seven five, yeah.
Alright, we are going to put point seven five on our postcard to let people know that's what the Board of Finance intent, current intention is. And that's the number that I will discuss or present at the board of, this public hearing. Alright, so we're gonna take a vote on the expenditures.
And I want you to say that number again because I think you read the twenty seventeen, eighteen number, not the twenty eighteen, nineteen.
Sixteen million nine hundred ninety-three, three five five. It's very possible I read.
No, that's what you just read.
That's right.
Because that's what I typed.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright. Before I run, using all the cliches available to me, beating a dead horse. Last year, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for highways. We said we couldn't live with it, move fifty back. Does anyone want to tell the town that we're going to spend more money on highways in this budget?
I think we'll just do it.
It's a, it's a hundred and fifty in here now, and we wish to raise it. Which means that instead of going to, if it's seven five, instead of going to surplus, it would go to a lineup. We would tell the town, we intend to spend two hundred, I'm making an error, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five. Or, which is my recommendation to Angus, let it go to surplus. If we need to draw on that, out of surplus, we will, to point highways, we will once again budget it to red. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I just think with the level of uncertainty, right, right at this moment, to put a bigger number in there, then, you know, you kind of hamstring yourself a little later if something adverse comes, comes our way.
If, if you put it there, you gotta take it out of there. If you allow it to drop to surplus, you have more flexibility, I think. And, and that's why I recommend we don't put it there to Angus. Although what troubles me is we have an obligation to say that down this is where we think we're spending our money. So, and it's not about giving flexibility to Board of Finance. But I, I think you're telling me back what I recommended Angus, we'll let it drop to surplus and if we need it, bring it out.
I would be my recommendation.
I agree.
Alright, alright, I have.
We need a mo, a motion on the expenditures.
We will need it. If the state pulls back on their municipal grant or the town aid road for next year too, we will need it. We, we did not do, thus far this, this fiscal year, the, the, the lack of three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars has prevented quite a bit of paving to be done. We're doing, we're doing what we can. We're spending our money, all of our money.
I think, I think once this sorts out, or, you know, time, time will cure us.
Time will tell.
Time will cure.
That's what you, that's what you would have thought.
Probably.
Yeah.
Cure it or kill it. But, I mean, then we can allocate appropriately, right?
Yep. Absolutely, but we, take a ride around, then I'm gonna start planting flowers in some of the roads.
Yep. Bridge, Bridge Street means a little.
Yeah, I know.
I'm gonna focus on you. I need to wrap my, first, please apply the first.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed fiscal year budget two thousand eighteen, nineteen expenditures of sixteen million nine hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred fifty-five to be presented at the town hearing on May first. And the, then to be voted on, well, just at the hearing on May first. Because we vote, we may change things then.
One second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll let Deborah say aye.
Aye.
Question for anyone who wants to. What if there is, what if we did want to change that budget between hearing and vote? Do we have a formal way of doing that?
Change the expenditures or change the number?
Change the budget, change the expenditure.
Why would you change it? Can't we suddenly receive the money?
Um, Bridge Street, false part. I don't know. Suddenly, there's no Bridge Street there, and we need to rebuild it. I just made that up because John offered it to me.
I think we have a line, line for that.
What if someone stood up and came up with a very good argument why we should, I don't know, I'm sure there's people out there sitting here saying we should raise some fee. Do we have the ability to change it once we send this over to here? It shouldn't, like, it should. That's what's there, to gather information.
Yeah.
I believe that we do. I will check on what that mechanism is. I believe that it's something that would have to be moved after, at the meeting. I believe that is the case.
Can't you amend?
I don't think, once you, once it gets moved, once we come out of that meeting and it gets moved to a vote, it stays the same. We have to change it.
Move it to a vote at the.
At the town meeting, at the public hearing.
Public hearing, move it to a vote.
It's moved to a vote, yep.
Are we adjourned to a vote?
We adjourned to a vote. And that takes place on May twenty-first. So I believe there is a mechanism at the, the public hearing to change lines. But once it's moved to a vote, no changing.
Who moves it to a vote? I sit down, you, I do?
You guys do.
I do, okay. Do we meet after the meeting and move it to a vote, or how do we?
We don't meet after that. We meet after the town meeting, the annual town meeting.
It has the vote, to set the mill rate.
To set the mill rate only.
Right.
It's the only thing we do. It's about a one-minute meeting to set the mill rate.
Yep.
I don't recall ever making a motion to.
Move it to a public hearing?
Yeah, no, I don't. Yeah, no, I don't ever, we just present it and that's what it is, a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion, but generally.
We'll, we'll check that out. My, my recollection is that's when it gets moved to a vote.
It'll get there. All right, folks, does anyone have any additional things they would like to discuss?
Oh, yes, hold on.
Yes, yes, almost caught me.
If people are not happy with the amount that the schools, Supervision District Region Four is being funded, if they think it's too high, everyone needs to get out and vote at the referendum next week on Wednesday.
Second.
On Wednesday the second. If you're not happy with it, vote. Sheer volume of numbers can defeat that. It doesn't, it's not Essex voted yes, Chester voted yes, we voted no. It's sheer volume of numbers. So, the more people that come out and vote, vote their heart. I'm not saying vote yes or vote no, but come out and vote. Sheer volume of numbers will bring it down if enough people say, hey, wait a minute, our budget is too high and it's because the schools are receiving over seventy percent of our expenditures. The town is receiving less this year than they did last year and the schools are receiving a lot bigger number and having a significant decrease in student enrollment. Something's got to give. So, sheer volume, come out and vote. That's the only thing.
There was only a hundred, a hundred votes difference last, last year.
Yep.
Yeah, but we have, we, we had such an insignificant number of total voters.
Oh, I know, you're right, Laurie, I agree with you.
And if everybody just came out and voted.
I'm just saying, there's only a hundred.
Yeah, that's it. It's insignificant.
It, it passes by very small.
Very small margin, yep.
Because people just don't.
Oh, it doesn't count. Well, yeah, it does count.
They have to vote.
Every vote counts. At this level, every vote counts. Voting for the president, no, it may not count, but this level makes a big difference to just vote. I'll get off my high horse now, sorry.
I, I, I'm not going to say vote yay, vote nay.
No, and I didn't, I said vote.
But I will say, come out and vote. I'd really like to see Deep River.
Yeah.
Come out and, and outvote everybody, whether it's yay or nay.
Total vote.
Just vote. It's a, it's a, really is, it affects us more than anything that, that, that Region Four budget.
Do you have any explanations as to why there's such apathy?
No.
Why people don't show up to vote? I mean, it certainly affects everybody in town, whether you have kids or you don't have kids in school.
They complain afterwards.
The, the worst, the worst part of it is that at the public hearing, fifty percent of the complaints that we get are the schools. And the question always is, it's always the same day, the referendum is always the same day, say, did you vote? Oh, no.
It's the next day.
But today, it's the next day. This year is the next day, so we can encourage them to go vote at the people that come to the public hearing.
But again, it's not my people who are coming to that.
No.
No.
Well, what happens, I mean, we go to vote for our budget and people get all sick because it's so high.
Yep.
And the only, and we keep cutting it and cutting it and as high is the Regional Four budget.
Region Four.
Which they've already passed. So, if everyone got voted for it or against it, the point is, they can't come back to us in the town meeting and say, your budget's too high. Well, it's not our fault.
If you look at our general increase, the general increase in this budget is an increase of, but you're better at this than me, but our, our total expenditures is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Our schools, a hundred and five or a hundred and ten, isn't it?
Our school, Region Four is a hundred and two. Our, our general government.
Yeah, I'm down to five or six. Was it me?
That's what you sent to us today.
Is really not, not going up that much.
Oh.
You just sent that today.
I didn't send the budget you're looking at today?
What, you, you did, but this is what you sent.
Here, Laurie.
Okay, cool.
Do you need?
This is part of my.
No, it just, it just the general government.
Oh, okay, okay. This is part of my presentation.
Yeah.
So, the, the town increase is five point seven percent.
Yeah, that's it.
Back to the why people aren't voting, do you think it's because people assume that voting for an education budget means they're literally voting for the education of the teaching of their children and not all the auxiliary expenses that go with it? Do you think people feel that if we cut an education budget, we are not educating our kids?
That's what they're going to tell them.
That's the picture they.
But that's not true.
And we're going to take away the arts and we're going to take away football.
So, if that's the problem, how do you correct that? How do you change that perception of people? You know, you can talk to your blue face and tell people to go vote, but if they don't have a.
It's administration. The, the budget is salary, what is it, eighty percent, seventy-five, eighty percent of their budget is all salaries. And a lot of that is administration. And if they realize how much of that is just salary as opposed to actual paper for the kids, Band-Aids for the kids, things like that, it's a very small percentage.
Well, that is an interesting observation. If you, whenever a budget is cut and we see it, a big part of the cut, well, I can't say cut, but a big part of Region Four's budget, not increasing as much as usual, is because they cut a whole team, they lost four teachers. So, the process of trimming a budget by starting it with teachers is not necessarily where you're going to find the savings. You know, obviously, teacher salaries are a big part of the salaries that you're talking about, but you have to open up the field to the whole, the whole thing, not just the teachers. Teachers are what the voters, impacts the voters. And that's what's, you know, that's the political part of that budget process.
And that costs money.
Administration per capita is a lot more money.
Yeah.
All right, with our vote tonight, Angus will take it, give it to whoever needs to, put it on a postcard, send it out, publish it in the newspaper.
Yep. Students see it in the Valley Courier.
We'll make copies of the budget.
It already has been in the Valley Courier for, it should be in this week's Valley Courier for the, um, public hearing to see what the gains of the budget. And the postcard should be in everybody's house by this weekend if everything goes according to plan. Should never know.
Make the motion to resign.
We're resigning. I'm out of here.
Not accepted.
No, no.
I'm like, I'm like Phil and John, this is too damn expensive, I'm out of here. Uh, motion to, um.
Adjourn.
Adjourn, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Russ, want to discuss it?
No, 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 I, I made the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Eight thirty-two, and this time I noted the time.